Started then. Welcome all to the March 12, 2024, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board here in Easton. This hybrid meeting will be conducted in person and remotely over Zoom. Attendance by Planning Board members may be in person or remote, and both types of attendance shall count toward quorum. This meeting may be broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. To use Zoom, you will need to use the link on the agenda or download the Zoom application. You'll need the webinar ID to join by phone only. While conducting hybrid meetings, we will endeavor to keep meeting operations as close to standard procedures as possible. However, use of the remote platform will necessitate some additional meeting protocols. While the board members or commissioners and applicants will be on video and audio, public participants invited to speak by the chair will be in person, on video, or and/or audio. Public participants joining by Zoom will be muted and with no video feed from them. Public lines will be muted throughout the meeting to allow the board to conduct business and to eliminate background noise. All votes will be by roll call. And for public hearings during the public testimony portion of the meeting, members of the public joining by Zoom may be recognized by using the Raise Hand function found under Participants from Zoom, or make a request with the Q&amp;A function. If you're joining by phone only, you can press 9 to raise your hand. As in any public hearing, testimony offered must be related to the hearing being held. An off-topic commentary or indecent behavior will not be tolerated. The Chair reserves the right to end the testimony of anyone who abuses use of the meeting platform. Lastly, when all business indicated on the agenda has been completed, the members will vote to adjourn the meeting, signaling the end of the meeting and the termination of the ECAT recording. Thank you. All right. So we have a number of topics to discuss today. We're going to try to keep them according to the timelines here as best we can. The first one, as we all know, Peter has resigned from the board, and so we need to have a board officer's vote. I assume the goal here is to have Chair and Vice Chair announced and voted on at this point. I mean, is there anything else we need to say on that? We've done it a few times before.
Other than someone's made a motion.
Yeah, pretty much. All right. So as Acting Chair, does anyone want to nominate someone to be Chair?
Can I nominate you?
You may.
I'll second that.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We will have a vote. Ketum?
Aye.
Mickey?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And Joanne?
Aye.
Okay. Stetson is an aye as well. So I will serve as the new Chair. As for Vice Chair, do we have any motions for a nominee?
I will step forward, but I'd like to defer to Joanne first with more experience. If she says no, then I will step forward, but...
I am very happy to nominate Mickey and make a motion.
Second. Great. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ketum?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Zygmunt?
Aye.
And Stetsons an aye. All right. We have a newly constituted vote, just in time for the continued public hearing on the MBTA Communities Act. We did have, before we vote to close the meeting, I just want to note for the record, we did have some additional submissions come through, as we'd said we would allow at the last meeting. That, I'm told, we do not need to read the comments. They are on record. They are part of the record. They're available to the public to see. It's many of the same things. I think we had three more submissions. It's very similar comments that we've heard all along. So at this point, I don't think we're going to take any more testimony. May I have a vote to close the public meeting?
Motion to close the public meeting. Ketum?
Second. Wolf?
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Ketum?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Zygmunt?
Aye.
And Stetson is an aye. So we should have some deliberation here, and I do want to hand it over to Stephanie. We've been talking about this for, boy, it's well over a year at this point. We've gone through a lot of iterations. The project, or the zones have changed dramatically. You know, just by way of background, I know when we first started talking about this, we were trying to fit everything up in the Eastman Foundry area. You know, we got a lot of feedback on that. We've made a lot of changes. At this point, we've got three different zones, which I think are all appealing in their own right. My kind of sense of where we're at is that we have some really good options that I'm going to have Stephanie walk you through. And I think one thing to consider is there's been a lot of feedback, in particular from the Eastman Foundry people, that will be most affected by that zoning. And I think we've heard a lot of valuable and constructive points raised by them throughout the process. And, you know, my preference would be to try to do something that, you know, really works a kind of a compromise between all the different things that we've heard. And I think we've got three really good options. One of them gets us quite a bit closer to that magical 913 number that I think we've all been striving for, while also giving us, I think, a sufficient buffer. So I just wanted to provide that kind of overview on my insights, because I know Stephanie and I, and I know Wayne Beitler's here as well, he's been helping us with the calculations. We've done a lot of calculations since the last meeting. And so with that intro, I'd like to turn it over to Stephanie to kind of walk everybody through what we think are the three best options based on everything we've heard.
All right. So Bob, why don't I start with the sheet that shows the three different options, and then I'll show them visibly. The board members, I'll have them. You have packets in front of you that have these, and I'll talk you through so you know what you're looking at. Plus, I'm going to display them on the screen.
There is no detail on Eastman Foundry that we don't have anymore.
Okay. So, okay, great. All right. So again, I'm going to open up the Harrison of the three different options that then we will visibly look at in just a few minutes. Let me just make this work as much as possible for... So Wayne, do I have the...
I can't really see from here.
Okay.
It looks like you grabbed the larger one, not the final one.
Yep. So just bear with me a minute. This is what happens when you try to be extraordinarily well-prepared and... So I really apologize for this.
Yeah. And while Stephanie's looking, I can just kind of walk you through at least the numbers preliminarily, and then we'll look at it on the screen. The first option that we were sort of looking at is, based on all of the feedback in the Easton, Eastman Foundry area, we wanted to try the calculations by only including the Avalon properties in the calculation. And so you'll see on all three options, we've got Eastman Foundry identified as 22 acres. That's what that property is only with the two Avalon properties. You'll see Washington North stays steady in all three options as 33 acres, for the very simple reason that we want to maintain, you know, a buffer on the 25 acres of contiguous. And the idea being that, you know, in the event that the train ever does end up stopping by there, we want to be kind of prepared for that as best we can. So we left that at 33. The biggest variable that, just again, running the numbers in a bunch of different ways, the biggest variable that we found we were able to do was on Belmont. And in the first one, Option 1, that's the Belmont sort of as-is. And that brings us to a capacity, based on the calculations, of 1,115 potential units.
Can you email it?
We have another option where we got rid of, basically, the elbow of properties between the marketplace and, I guess it's the IBC sliver spot. That reduces the acreage from 20 in Belmont down to 17, and that reduces the unit capacity down to 1,077. And then we ran the calculation, which is identified as Option 3, without any of the marketplace or those properties, basically on the western side of where the IBC property is. And in Belmont, that would bring the acreage covered down to 10. And that configuration actually gets us under 1,000, and it gets us down to 972. Which, again, running the numbers in any way that made any kind of remotely logical sense to us, that was the way that we could get it closest to the 913, based on the three districts that we've identified. And so that's sort of the overview. I know you guys don't have the map, or the public doesn't have the maps, but at least for you guys who do have the maps, that is hopefully a little bit of an explanation.
Yeah. And we'll have the maps up in just a minute, and we will have this up.
Oh, there it is. Perfect.
Bear with me. Well, you know what? We'll do this through Splash Top, just to make it easy right now for everybody. So let me just zoom in a little more. As Bob was explaining, Option 1 is reduced to exclude all but Avalon. But it doesn't change any of the other two districts, except for North Washington, which we've taken the, the Planning Board previously removed the easterly properties. If you do that, you can see the individual acres, dwelling units per acre, and the total unit capacity for those districts. But if you look at the total, which is really what we're looking at right now, you'd have 75 acres. That certainly provides more than the 50 acres that you require, and 1,115 units capacity in total. If you look at Option 2, that is reduced to all but Avalon in the Eastman Foundry area. And then it reduces Belmont Street to exclude five parcels east of IBC. And those are the five parcels that are along Belmont Street. And again, we'll look at all these in just a minute. That gets you to a total unit capacity of 1,077 units and 72 acres. So again, you've reduced that acreage a little bit more. You've reduced by a little less than 100 units on the total capacity. If you remove all the parcels west of IBC from the Belmont-Washington Street District, that gives you a total unit capacity of 972 units, which is, as Bob pointed out, much closer to the 913, which is the minimum that the town is required to have. That's the 10% of the town's permanent housing stock. And it brings the acreage down to 65 acres, which is only 15 acres more than the 50. We did do a few iterations, reducing it a little bit, pulling out some parcels here or there, and we either then eliminate the 25 contiguous acres. We run afoul of that requirement. We can't, I think the lowest, we could, you'd reduce it, and it would bring it down to 22 acres, which would not comply. And then you start getting closer, really close to the 913. So this seemed to make sense. Right, I'm going to close out of that, get out of Splash Top. And open up the, so, again, just to reiterate so you can visualize this. This is the Belmont-Washington Street District as it's currently configured. And again, that would bring us to the 1,115 units in total. This map shows if you removed those five parcels to the west of IBC along Belmont Street, but still include the marketplace. And again, that brings you to 1,077 units in total across the whole district. And this shows what would remain if you removed all the parcels west of IBC. You still have a contiguous area that would comply with the zoning requirements. You still have these parcels here, which we have heard previously from the developer or the owner of those parcels, that they very much would like to take advantage of the MBTA zoning and develop into multifamily housing. And you have the multifamily housing that exists over here as well. So with those three, you end up with, and Bob, I'm going to go through all of the districts now. Open up that one. So again, in the past, we've always started with the Eastman Foundry District, and this is in response to all the input from the Furnace Village residents. This would just include the Avalon parcels. It removes the other parcels south of those. The North Washington would just be comprised of the parcels around Roach Brothers Way. And then the last district, the Belmont-Washington, would just include these parcels east of the IBC parcel.
Yeah. And just to give some more insights into, you know, why we're showing you these ones, it's, we kind of started at the point of, well, let's factor in everything that we've heard about Eastman Foundry, and let's see what we can do by messing around with the other ones. We did mess around quite a bit with Washington, Washington North, and again, just, we end up being way too close to the 25 acres there for it to have any meaningful change in the unit counts. And so that's where we kind of, it led us to Belmont Street and, you know, kind of crunching the numbers over there a little bit more. So, I mean, we've talked about a lot over the last year, plus, what are you guys thinking? I mean, you know, what are your thoughts here? Joanne, as well.
Bob, if I may?
Yeah, please.
To Stephanie, I'm wondering, so the closest we get to the minimum is 972. I'm wondering whether that's something that you're confident will pass the state? Is that enough of a buffer, do you think? And are communities getting that close to that number in other towns? Or should we really be looking at, like, the middle scenario to allow for, you know, a more comfortable buffer? How close is too close, I guess, is my question.
So those are really good questions, Joanne. I'm going to answer the first one about how confident we are. Wayne and I are now quite confident. I think we, I know I've mentioned at past meetings that we received feedback from Housing and Livable Communities on their pre-adoption review. We had a meeting with Emma from that office last week because one of the, not because of the other information, they had comments on the zoning language itself, which we were able to easily answer, and there were a few little tweaks we needed to make to the text of the zoning. But the way they wrote their response, it sounded as though they hadn't really looked thoroughly at the models. And that was the first question we asked. How confident, did you look at the model? She said, "Your models were perfect." We thought that the way we wrote this, it indicated that. So she took that as, we'll make sure in the other letters we provide to other communities that we make that clear. So I think, again, I have a familiarity with GIS and Wayne, and we worked on this, and we really had a much better understanding of the model than we gave ourselves credit for. Other communities that is, that want to get it passed, I mean, that is the goal, I think, of the town. I know the Select Board, the goal of the town is to get this passed. The funding that is available to the town is really important. It is funded in important infrastructure projects that have resulted in new development within the town. More recently, in the Five Corners District, the Furnace Village Neighborhood District, but historically in the downtown area, which is really a good example of how the town would like to see its target growth areas develop. And these areas still are located in areas consistent with the priorities that have been established in various planning documents the town has undertaken. So that's the goal of the town, is to get it passed. And yes, other communities are finding that they can get it passed if they don't overreach. Did I answer all your questions?
You did, yeah. Thanks, Stephanie.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think we need to give exactly what you're asking us, just those five, and not more. The buffer for the safety numbers we have calculated shouldn't be...
Excuse me, Amos, you're a little difficult to hear. I don't know if your mic is on. Do you have a mic?
The mics only pick up recording for the video. Amos, you need to speak louder.
Okay. Because it's very clear for everybody else, but Amos is very quiet.
So we need to give what we are asked to provide and not more. We shouldn't inflate the numbers just to pass. If we are not sure about our models, we calculate, you hear me, Stephanie, that we are, that we think that our calculations are right, and there will not be another nuance from the state calculating differently. I think if you pass a 972, it is perfectly okay, and we are going to be in line with the public wants from us to do.
Yes. And I would say it's not in the state's interest to nitpick on the number. So if they tell us that our calculations are good and we've done it properly, then I believe that that's what they mean.
Following up on that comment, so if we bring, say, the option that has the closest number to what our target is, we take it to town meeting, and it passes, and the state rejects it, what do we do from there?
We would have to make, the town would have to make adjustments and try again at fall town meeting.
Okay. Would we hear from the state between that timeframe?
They are working extra hard. They're hiring more people so that they can ensure that towns that have taken the initiative, gone to town meeting, and passed, that they're getting feedback as quickly as possible.
Okay.
And not missing their deadline for compliance.
But I think that's, and maybe this goes to one of Joanne's questions, that's one of the reasons why we've been targeting a buffer. You know, and I think we've always kind of talked about 50, you know, as a reasonable buffer in that regard, to address that very concern.
Right.
And, you know, that 972 number is about as close as we could figure it out, again, with multiple configurations, where we felt reasonably comfortable that if we're able to get everybody on board and supportive of this at the town meeting this time around, that we're not going to have to go back to the well. Mickey, what do you think?
I appreciate the care with which this board and Stephanie's department, and Stephanie and Wayne especially, have listened to folks and have crafted some really careful districts that are both respective, respectful of the concerns about development in both ways. We had the folks from Belmont Street, the owners, come and express interest in possible development. So it's good to see that that's still in there as well, that we're kind of hitting both sides, the folks who are interested and the folks who are not necessarily interested, given that this is still just an overlay, like, nothing is happening, it's just an overlay, that we're still able to kind of fix within there to meet the requests. So I think as good as it's going to get. I tend to be someone who likes a buffer, just having, I do that with my budgets as well, because I have to meet them with the state. I always like to have a buffer and not come too, too close. But I can respect the fact that this is a super-sensitive topic, and too much of a buffer is going to put it in jeopardy, and that's not what anybody wants.
So do we, as a group, feel pretty comfortable with that Option 3, the one where we basically slice it down to the 972 number? So I'm seeing some nods of the head. I will accept a motion. Actually, do we have to vote for, do we have to do it as a warrant, or how do we do this?
You're going to vote to recommend it to town meeting.
To town meeting. Okay.
Motion to recommend to town meeting, option number 2, as presented.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ketum?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Zygmunt?
Aye.
Stetsons an aye as well. Thank you all for your hard work, and thanks to everyone. Yes, Mr. Carrister.
May we recognize you briefly?
You met.
Thank you. I wanted to thank Stephanie and her office and the town and all of the board for giving this due consideration, hearing the concerns. Our group takes to heart the public input as part of these processes, and we really appreciate everybody for having given so much consideration to us. You know, throughout the past year, we've been focused on this, and want to also reassure the board... on this, and, um, want to also reassure the board that, as I think you sense, Bob, you asked a question at the meeting on February 27th at Frothingham, with a show of hands of folks who would support it. And I think you're going to find that our group is going to be very much a strong proponent for the passage of this at town meeting, as is readily apparent. Most of our members are multifamily, uh, unit owners, um, and, uh, we have, in our group, uh, Lamplighter and Gaslight and Greenwood and so forth, and, um, so our folks are motivated to support of that, and to, to run contrary to the extent that there is any sentiment in town of an anti-apartment, that's not our group. And we have the five other folks seated here, along with me, and then sort of our core group, and to him is our planning and getting the word out to folks and so forth. And we will work as hard to, um, get our group out to vote, and hopefully to vote in favor of this project at town meeting as we have, to bring the concerns to your attention. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody.
Well, thank, thank you, Dale, and to your group. I mean, you know, I hope, I hope everyone recognizes that we really have, um, you know, really taken some pains to make sure this was a, a democratic process, and, you know, listening to all of the input and trying to incorporate that. So, the, the compliance with this law has so many overwhelming benefits to our town for a lot of the reasoning, reasons that Stephanie brought up, and it really is important for your group to come out and support, and, and we really appreciate the sentiment. So, thank you all for your input as well, because, um, you know, we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for you guys. So, thank you.
Bob, could I just say one last thing?
Yes, of course.
It's following up on what Dale said, kind of. Um, so we will be planning, probably, they will probably be in the form of open houses, but we need to continue to educate and help people, um, in the general public become informed as to what this zoning is, how the board has approached this, how the board has responded to input from folks like the Furnace Village Neighborhood people, um, so that it can pass at town meeting. So, we will be publishing a schedule. I'll be working with Bob and the board to talk about how those will be conducted. Please, um, stay tuned. We will publish notices in the town prior. We will put it out on our NBTA website. We'll talk about it at the next meeting, when those meetings are going to be held. And again, your support in helping, letting people know that, um, they can learn more about the zoning ahead of town meeting, and, and that it would behoove them to, to do that, so that they're informed at town meeting. Thank you.
Wonderful. Well, on to the next item on the agenda, which is the eternally, internally illuminated sign at 560 Foundry Street.
Let's see. Bob, we can't take that one until 7:15 because that would have a date at time.
Oh, we are early.
We can move forward with, um, either, you could move forward with the continued public hearing, free.
Are they here, or do we want to... They are here. All right. Yeah, we'll take you guys if you're ready. Well, we're going to continue to take the continued public hearing out of order for 523 Foundry Street. Uh, please, whenever you guys are ready, just introduce yourselves, and, and then you can make your presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for hearing us. Uh, my name's Walter Hermannall, professional engineer, representing Mr. Adams tonight for Plaza at Foundry, 523 Foundry Street. Excuse me. Uh, we have a continuance from last November of this project. I just wanted to give you a quick update on any changes that we've made since then. We've had a rigorous peer review, and we have achieved compliance with the stormwater standards for the bylaw, as well as the mass DEP. We have the infiltration basin, the subsurface structure in the front. This is larger than before. We have one right here. This one on this side of the property will be exclusively for the roof. This one in the front is exclusively for all of the paved surfaces otherwise on the property. We've captured over 99% of all runoff from paved surfaces, and we are treating it through proprietary separators on one side and on the other end of the subsurface structure in the beginning. The proprietary separators offer a higher degree of removal of total suspended solids and other pollutants like oils and trash. But this is basically, uh, total suspended solids is what might be sand or dirt that accumulates on the paved surfaces of the property. All of that water gets recharged on, underground, and, uh, we've achieved compliance with the state stormwater standards, as I said, as well as the town bylaw. Uh, other changes, we have patio area on the front, right and left, which now has vertical granite curb and has a two-foot landscape buffer. It has granite posts with wrought iron fence. And in the rear, we have a short retaining wall. I should add that the location of these basins is in the suitable soils on the property, and that we've added about a foot or two of fill in order to achieve separation to the water table, which also explains why we need a small retaining wall in the back. Also in the back, we have a row of avivites. Those are known as green giants. There are going to be six-foot plantings, at least six feet on center. Uh, that summarizes our changes to the site plan. We have a rendering over here that Mr. Adams has provided. You can see the vertical granite curb and with the landscaping and the fencing on the front right of the building. You can also see it on the front left of the building, much better in this picture, it's on both sides. And we centered the walkway, the pedestrian accessway, right through the center of the property, connecting to Foundry Street. That summarizes, uh, changes since we last met. Anything to add, Mr. Adams?
I'm sorry, those benches weren't even...
Do you have anything you'd like to add?
The benches show, you know, the, the picture.
Oh, I think they're coming. Yeah, there are benches, sir?
Oh, yeah, there's benches, yes, along the, on the front. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. Yeah, benches along the front, and a couple of benches inside the fence, and a bench on the other side. And there's benches over here in the area, people, if they want to, you know, have a cup of coffee and sit outside, there's also some tables on the other side. We've got wrought iron fence with granite, um, separators, granite posts, um, and the wrought iron fence is to kind of give it the Foundry look, you know, with the steel and all that.
And Bill, I think we thought the vertical granite curb and also would look nicer, but, besides that, and the fencing, it's an additional measure to make sure if anyone's outside on the patio, they won't hopefully accidentally, uh, be hit by a vehicle. So it's a safety measure and aesthetics.
Okay. Please.
I brought, uh, some pictures of the lights that I'm proposing. I had a photometric plan drawn, which was submitted, which is part of that. This is the light, which, uh, five, six.
Thank you.
And then I also have, uh, these slides I call them, I call these next ones, which are on the front of the building, which will be, um, with tenants, with commercial tenants. Uh, you'll like their sign, these over here. Uh, I think I have a picture, uh, here, that shows little signs on the front and the little loose nuts. I might take those signs, instead of having them hanging signs, and churn them and mount them right on the building with a small frame. I don't know if you can see that, but...
All right. Well, thank you for that presentation. Uh, Stephanie, any comments?
Um, I have a couple. So I just want to remind the applicant, and I think, Bill, you're well aware of this, that you need to contact, if you haven't already, you may have, contact the DPW and the Assistant Town Administrator about the privilege fee for the new development. Um, I, Walter mentioned the plantings of trees along the property line between the subject property and Gaslight Village. I want to acknowledge for the residents that live there that we know that they have cleared the trees already as part of the process, um, and that the buffer will be required, and that the trees need to be, when they're planted, at least six feet tall, um, because you need to replace this as in a buffer, they, they should be. Um, I, I think that we'd like to see some, I would suggest that the board ask to see as any, part of any condition, that we be provided with some spec sheets for the type of plants that they're proposing. Our provides, um, different varieties can be less sturdy. Um, they also like to, um, they attract deer. Deer like to eat them. I don't know that deer will be on this side of the, the, the area, but they might be on the Gaslight side. So I think that's something, we want to make sure that the, this is going to be a buffer, that the board wants to make sure it's going to be a buffer that's going to be persistent. Um, let's see, you provided the lamp style, that was part of my, um, report. And also, I believe that you, um, had suggested Cleveland pear as one of the deciduous, the, okay, because, yeah.
Two, two recommendations, and I switched on both, well.
Okay. Yeah, just for the board's edification, Cleveland pears are a cultivar. They are not a native plant, and they, um, while they produce a beautiful bronze leaf in the fall, they're not very sturdy. So, um...
So that was going to be one of my questions, but it sounds like you guys have already swapped out the two...
Yeah.
Okay, so it, it went from a Fraser fir and a Cleveland pear to the green giants that you mentioned?
No, for those two, sir, uh, those are white spruce.
Oh, okay.
And sugar maples. And in the back, that row is green giant.
Oh, okay, got it.
Which, uh, we understand should be, um, not deer-proof, but deer-resistant. That's their...
They grow very fast as well. I put some in the, in the little project that I had, and in two years' time, they were 12 feet or tall. So at that time, I cut the top off, and they, and they just get, kind of get wider. And they grow, they fill in a six-foot space.
Which, which is really, really what you want. You want something that's not going to be a slow grower and that fills out.
Right.
So it'll kind of almost turn into like a, like a hedge?
It'll be a wall.
A wall?
A wall, yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay. Before we open it up to the public, which we will, uh, do we have any other questions from board members?
I just had a quick question about the parking. Um, it indicates, uh, 42 total. Are the residence ones going to be marked in terms of, or is it going to be kind of catches, catchcan in terms of parking between the residential and the commercial?
Okay, if I understand the question, you're asking if there will be designated parking spaces, Bill?
Designated parking spaces to...
For the resident.
Between the uses of the building, between retail or the residence, yeah?
Well, most of the residents, we believe, will, will use the rear out in the back, and the, and the, and the commercial customs will be up in the front and on the sides. So I'm, I'm hoping it divides up that way. I mean, I could put signs for residential use, but I don't know that that's necessary.
I'm just thinking of, if the businesses are popular and there becomes competition, it's a small space and there's not a lot of parking, there's not street parking, and there's not spate parking, like, on the sides, just to make sure those folks who are living there, um, have, have a space.
Point taken. That's a good point. Um, I do agree with Bill. I think that the residents will be likely to use the area in the back, and maybe on the perimeter, on, on the left and right side. Uh, if it were myself, I would probably try to park my vehicle not too close to others that are constantly coming and going, less dense maybe. But, um, Bill, I'll leave it up to you as far as ensuring the residential spaces.
The units in the back, and the, and the commercial entrances are in the front.
Okay.
So I, you know, people, I mean, if the whole parking lot's full, and that was my concern with eliminating the front parking spaces. So if, if the whole place is full, I mean, most of the time, people during the day are going to work, so spaces will, will free up, and then at night, with, you know, some of the stores may not be open at night too.
We've calculated a requirement for 37 spaces, and we've provided 42.
Yeah. So, Bob, if I may?
My question is, signage needed. You mentioned it, but maybe you need it, so there is no...
Right.
Consider that, because it wouldn't be a profit, that's what's mentioned.
Joanne?
I have a few questions. Um, I see in the, in the back and the front, there's a handicap ramp. Are any of the units being built so that folks who have accessibility needs could either move right in, or at least in the future, adapt, um, the, the residential units for their needs?
So, can I, because I think that, um, I think what Joanne is asking for is universal design, which means that the units are designed for people with disabilities.
Oh, yeah.
And, and yet they're still compatible for everybody else.
Yeah, that, I, I think that's an automatic thing nowadays for the architects when they design them, because you never know, you know, who's going to rent what unit, and...
And, and that's what I was going to say. That's been our, our experience, that...
Right, that's kind of common, yeah.
I know Doug King did that over at, um, I think the condominiums, and he built some specifically for accessibility, and they were so popular that that's how he designs all his. So I think that...
Oh, great.
It, it's not, it's not an increasing cost to the developer.
Yeah, super. And then also, I wanted to ask, um, and I don't think there's necessarily a need for this, but I just wanted to ask whether these, um, units are going to allow pets, and if so, if there's going to be like a designated pet area for people, or is it just going to be kind of wherever they want to take them to, to the green space?
Dedicated parking for residential, you know?
No, pets, she's asking, if there'll be pets allowed in the building?
Pets?
Yes, and where will they go to leave themselves on the property? Will they be designated areas?
I haven't really thought that about pets too much. Uh, it's something I would consider, but I don't know that, that, uh, I mean, there's plenty of green space out there, but, you know, I don't know if, uh, if I would allow pets or not at this point.
Okay. Stephanie, has, has Easton encountered that before? I know, in my experience, on, on some of the boards in Brockton, that kind of came up often, um, in developments, but is that sort of a non-issue here?
So, um, again, because we haven't had a lot of multifamily units, and, uh, the developers haven't expressed that they're having, allowing pets, but I know Avalon, which is a much larger area, they do allow pets, and they do have a specific pet yard and potty area.
Yeah, I mentioned it, because I think it's, I think it's important to consider. I think, I know with some of the trails in Easton, there are concerns about, you know, folks being on the trails who might be fearful of dogs and having to encounter them on the same trail. So kind of similarly here, if maybe there, you know, was some consideration to kind of a designated area, um, it just might be one of those... it just might be one of those other amenities that might make it attractive for folks with or without pets to, to kind of coexist in the same multifamily space.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
That could be a condition the board could impose on the decision that if pets are allowed, that they have to have a designated potty area that isn't the general landscaping area?
It would save the landscaping for sure.
Yeah.
Which, I know you were going to make a comment because I'm not sure we finished up. I'm sorry, Joanne, are, did we hit all your questions?
Yep, I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Can I get back just one sec to the, the question I think I had about, particularly about the parking? Is that there's some really nice seating there, so to encourage people in the retail to kind of sit, to relax, to kind of hang out. And that was where I guess my question with parking is, is if you have people using the stores and sitting outside, kind of out there as well, you're gonna, there's gonna come like a point where there's no more available space. I lived on the vineyard for a couple of years and so the, the traffic you have there, competition for parking gets pretty intense in spots. It's kind of why it's top of my mind.
I can relate.
Yeah.
Just to remind you that we are trying to establish a walking neighborhood.
Well, so what do we, what do we think here? I mean, should we, should we be asking for some sort of a, like a parking plan in terms of designation? Because I mean, I, I am sort of sympathetic to the idea that it's gonna, the, the need will change throughout the day, potentially. But I don't, I don't have enough expertise in parking to know what it would look like.
I think my, my concern is for the families who are on the upper floors, just making sure that there is, there's something for them and you don't wind up in a minivan circling the parking lot, waiting to find a spot that you can park and get to your space.
So Bob, that was, that was going, my comment was going to be in response to that. Again, the board could require that there be signage that indicate that the rear parking is for residents only. It doesn't mean that people won't, and, and people, I think, will that are using, are patrons of any retail service that if for some reason all that parking's full, they will drive out back probably during the day and maybe take a space. But if you have signage up, they're less likely to do that. And especially, I think they'll, they would be more cognizant of, is it daytime and people are likely at work? Is it 5:00 and people are likely to be coming home? But I think the signage might help.
I mean, do you have any problem with signage? I didn't think so, okay. All right, that's great.
Yeah.
True, but then it just kind of pushes stuff.
When you go to the upper area, you're not always parking front of that store. You park, there is parking 300 yards from there, too. So we, we are intending for this area to be a walking area. That's the reason I asked you last time to check with your neighbor and see if you can put a temporary walking area through the front of his property, through your property, because that connects all the way from the corner to the business. It's very attractive for the business I want to be here.
And we did consider that comment from the last meeting. This is a state layout and I do not believe they're going to allow anything temporary. But I believe as Stephanie has revealed, previous meetings, it's very early on, but we saw a plan that was 10% complete where the state is proposing to put a sidewalk when they do improvements on this roadway.
That's eight years away, so if you can, if you can arrange something, that doesn't need to be in the plan. I strongly recommend for your property value to do that.
Shall we open it up to public comment? All right. And please come on up and just state your name and your address before you present.
I'm Alice McCann, I live at 25 Gaslight Lane. So I live in the condominium complex that's directly behind the building. And we're really concerned with the exposure. This, the whole building, the whole back is just now exposed to 106, which is not just noise, but just the privacy. We all have decks and patios that we sit out behind our units. And now you're, we might as well be on 106 with the cleared road. And also, we're much higher, your block kind of drops down. So I wondered where that retaining wall, will that be right at the property line? And the, and where will the shrubbery be parked? Because we had those, they must have been 60-foot trees that were there before and there was slower shrubs. In the summer, we couldn't even see the road and now we're totally exposed, so.
We're going to raise the, the back up.
Right, because, well, you'd have to just to keep the soil from eroding.
And then we're planting those trees in the back. Those trees are going to grow 12, 15 feet tall. And, you know, if we can put more plants in, we will, but there's a limited amount of space in the back.
I mean, we used to have nice shade, now no shade. All of our buildings are just totally exposed.
I only clear that because that's, I have to put utilities through there. And, and most of the stuff that was there was, was overgrown into each other and dying and laying down. You know, there's a, was a giant tree out there that was hollowed out the middle.
Right.
So that tree was, would have came down eventually. Some of the trees were leaning towards your condos. And I called to try to get them to allow me to take them down and they never responded. So I brought a machine and they grabbed the tree.
Yeah, I watched, that was fun.
And pulled it back and carried it down the property line and it come down. So pine trees give you some blockage, but they end up, the branches die in the moment.
Most of them weren't pine, most of them were. Yeah, there was only a couple of pines. Most of them were, were dissident trees that we did get shade from them. Because the other thing would be noise and lighting. I mean, you have two dumpsters in the back there. I wonder if you're putting any fencing to buffer the noise when they come and they, you know, they take them up on the thing and they slam them down, they're right behind.
There will be a surround around the dumpster.
Because we're concerned with that and the lighting.
You can also limit the hours of the day that they come.
Right, because we've had to have that before. With the commercial in front of us, we had an issue with the dumpsters being picked up at 5:00 in the morning. It was, we, but they, they comply. Just trying to avoid issues after you're built. I would like to bring them up front so we're not complaining afterwards, because that's a big concern. And I guess the other thing would be light in the back. Without much buffer there, where people parked in the back and coming and going, we're going to have lights on. What, will it be like timed or which, or like if they see a car come, the light comes on and I just?
The lights that we propose, yeah, and they're around the roadway, they're spread out.
So you're saying there'd be more to the down, they'll be shining? I'm trying to answer the questions that people, when I go back, are going to ask me, so.
Well, good questions, if I may add, they're, they're down lighting in their, what we call dark sky or night sky compliant. It's where the light is shining down. And that's for all of these lights that are proposed anywhere around the building as well as throughout the property. Just we need a certain amount of light for the safety. The building, if I may go back to the concern about noise, the building is substantially larger than what was there before. It's about at least three times, if not more, wider. And it's going to be three stories tall, so the building in itself will be a good noise buffer for traffic from 106. It will not block out the entire sounds from 106, that's not possible. But it is substantially larger than the current building right now.
Because I, I don't know what other people were bringing up, but I'm just thinking, my unit, only part of it, it's set back a lot further. I'm worried about the people that want to build in where they're not very far from it. We didn't even realize where our border was. Right there, was that little wall, the stone wall is a little part of it. And it really did expose those people's yards.
There is, like, all that stuff on your side of the wall is still all there. That mature and green, you know, it's like, you know, briars and.
I was going to say, what's left is just a mess. It's just, it's just junk, there isn't anything, so, I don't know. Because we were thinking maybe some kind of fence, but we would probably have to put it on our property for those. Because you can see how each of our units, we have fencing, privacy between units. Now those units have no privacy from.
Right, you have a hill also in the back.
Yeah, and it's kind of low.
You put a fence on the top of your hill.
Especially that one on the corner, there with the, the deck. So, and then just for safety reasons, too, I know in that unit, the one that's the other way, there are young children that play VR or grandchildren that come and visit that play. So they're going to be out there and we have a big dog population and there, there will be dogs. Hopefully, they don't end up.
During construction, I'll fence in the entire property.
Right, during the construction, okay.
Children won't be able to get in with dogs or.
Yeah, no, I mean, concerned later on because it'll be a drop-off before we had all that, those. You know, like it was briars, I mean, it was, so no one would, in fact, there was an old barbed wire fence, I believe, in there. So that's why no one cut through at all, because it wasn't.
There's a shed out there now, an old shed.
Well, that shed belongs to the next property over, that is not our shed.
Oh, it's not on you, I thought, I have a question.
No, the shed is in front. I, I was looking out the window before, there's like, I don't know, a blue tarp and whatever.
It was right in here.
Oh, it's in there? There's, no, there's no shed there.
Yeah, that's, there's two sheds there. I took the one that was on my property down.
No, there's a, there's a shed over here. Over here is that, that building.
There's condos here.
The condos, there's, we don't have any sheds.
This is the property, there's a little red shed right there, somewhere out there. So, you know.
We have our club, our club, oh really? I wonder what it is, because I've never even seen it.
It looks like there was a well in it.
Oh, so something, that used to be our leach field.
That should be covered over or filled in or something.
Oh, really? Okay, all right. So I just wanted to just voice what we're looking for. I mean, you know, we, we, before, at least, we had that buffer and now it'd be really exposed. So as tall as you can build those trees would be appreciated.
They're going to grow, they're going to grow fast and there'll be six feet coming in and they'll be raised up from where it is now.
Okay.
So they're going to, you might get eight feet of height or 10 feet with a foot and a half, two feet of straw we're putting in. So they'll be up pretty good and they grow fast, they grow real fast.
All right, no, I just want to be able to answer questions when people ask me.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Carister?
I forgot to mention before, Dale Carister, 21 South Street, although you're probably already aware of that. I'm very excited about the project. I think it's a beautiful building. I'm very excited about the mixed-use component of it. You know, and the idea, whether it be a pastry shop or otherwise on the first floor and really truly moving towards a walkable community here. And I'm hoping that this will be transformative for the five corners area, that people will look at this as a great example of what can be done for mixed-use, where not only you're addressing some of the multifamily housing, but also for places to walk to. So I'm very much in favor and was very appreciative for the efforts that Mr. Adams made to listen to the public comment session with respect to this project for Roma Joe's and, you know, in terms of making some changes on the front to make it more accessible, visibly and so forth, with a patio, you know, table out in the back, in the front. So I, and I think some other folks from our group are very supportive of the project overall and I have no doubt that Mr. Adams will work with the Gaslight folks as well to address their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have anyone on Zoom? Okay. Joanne, did you have another question?
Yes, I'm not sure if you're done with the public in the room or?
Yeah, we're just waiting to see if anyone chimes in from, from Zoom, but no, please, feel free.
Okay, I'm just thinking about that a little bit more, the comments that were just made. So it looks like on the map that there is a retaining wall and on top of those are the trees that are going to be planted. So there's no room to put up a fence? Is that correct? Or could a fence be put up as well? I am just kind of a little worried about the kids falling off the retaining wall now.
I had a fence originally there and I, because a fence only covers six feet high or five feet high.
Right.
And I replaced it with natural, with the aprovites because you'll get a lot more coverage. It'll go away, like I said, 12, 15 feet high and they're six feet wide. So that will make a, a solid fence wall of, of vegetation landscape. So there's no room for a fence and, and the, and the trees, it's only like five.
And both. I guess back to the board, I don't know how other board members feel about that. I kind of, I'm, and I was an outdoorsy young person and still am and hiding in between arborvitae's was often kind of fun. So I, I don't know, I don't know if I'm overthinking the potential safety issue, but I also recognize that it will be really tough to fit both those and the fence unless you're going to go onto the Gaslight property, which I imagine would be complicated.
If I may, I, I was thinking the same thing. We just had the situation two weeks ago with a similar, with the fence and the trees. And the comment I made there and the comment I made here, too, is that good fences make good neighbors when you have those barriers. The trees I get because they're higher, but also having that fence. Also being someone who, who loved diving into shrubbery and bushes and climbing places, you will get through. Dogs as well, you have a dog that gets loose and they'll bolt, that's not going to stop them. So perhaps a fence, if it's possible, I don't know, but I, I do see what Joanne is talking about there.
The trees grow six feet wide.
They do grow substantially wide as they do tall.
We have five feet of area there, so if we put a fence there and we put the trees in front of the fence, away from the fence, they're going to be hanging over the driving, you know, where you're driving by and hitting cars. I mean, they could be trimmed all the time, but it causes a problem, you know, with, with the branches hanging over. They grow, they, they grow five, six feet at a minimum wide.
Is it possible to switch to a different type of tree, to accommodate the fence and the trees? Just, I'm just asking, I don't know.
I went by what would be the best barrier. I asked my landscaper, the line landscaper, to give me what he thought was the best barrier, most durable, deer-resistant for the rear of the property, so we're not replacing things all the time. And he said, this would be perfect for that little area. Because it's small, if it was bigger, we could stagger the trees and do all kinds of stuff.
It could be alternatives that would require cooperative effort with the neighbor. I don't want to get into them without discussing with my client first.
Yeah, yeah.
I really would strongly encourage you to consider that. I'm very familiar with arborvitae, I've been through them all, all the different varieties, most of which have been either dried out during drought summers or eaten by deer. The Green Giants are gray, but they still do, in, in, especially, you know, with a few years on them, they still do tend to thin out at the base a little bit. So they're not very, very thick at the base usually, at least from, you know, what I've seen. And, you know, if that is, it looks like it's what, a, a two-foot retaining wall? That's kind of a substantial drop for, you know, for a dog to bolt out through or a child to, to run through. So if it is possible to make it happen, I, I highly encourage it. But, you know, I think, I think that's ultimately up to you and what you think you might be able to work out. Because it's, the height is important here and that's the best plant for the height. So it is a good selection, but the fence barrier would also be important, I think.
I have some experience with hedges in my own yard in Berkeley, which is a deer haven. 34 years ago, I've lived there that long, we planted seedlings that were American arborvitae's that we bought, 500 of them for 250 bucks from Bristol Aggie. And we had a similar-sized one-acre lot and I put them halfway down here, all the way across the back, here, to my house, to my house. The deer never ate one needle on these American arborvitae's. But I saw one night a, a deer come up to my window and was eating something around my house and had a full rack on its head. But they never ate over 300 feet of my hedges, they were American arborvitae's. I've had to trim them back now four times since I've lived there. The last time I had a crew out there for four days and it cost me $3,500 because they were 18 feet tall. I had let them go a little bit and they do, to the laced lady's point, they do get seedy if you let them grow too tall. Because then you can start to see through the bottoms. If you maintain a decent height, somewhere between six to 12 feet, that vegetation will stay. somewhere between six to 12 feet, that vegetation will stay and grow through the bottoms.
Right.
But if you let them get up 16, 18 feet, like I have, I now can see a little bit too much through my neighbor's yard. But they've been a great buffer if you have the right arborvitae's. Because some, as we've all seen, the deer eat the first six feet, make it look like a stick, and then they bloom out. But I understand it's not the case with the green giants.
At first, I thought, you know, a fence is enough and appropriate for this, and it's more aesthetically pleasing than fences, okay, internally. But on the other hand, I see a problem that might be, especially for the virus on the back, is when the cars of man come with the light, that light will go directly to the gaslight abattoirs. And maybe a fence will, might be a solution for that. I am not for the fence. I don't like it. I have it in my house. I don't like it. They are ugly, and they don't last forever. So you need to continually replace. And they fall apart, and it is what it is, right? It's a fence. But on the other hand, might be a solution for the car lights.
Right. We could look at also at the turning radius.
Yeah.
And concentrate more trees in that area tighter. So when you come around the corner, the lights are deflected from the trees. And there's a lot of things we can do with that, and we do it.
So what do you think here, folks? Do we want to, do we want to give them another chance to just shore up the plans back there, to address some of these comments or come up with some ideas? What do we think?
I think that I don't want to put obstacles. Developing this property is important. It's nice. This is a detail. I will leave it to them. They are very responsible, responsible to respond to us. Until now, I think they will do a good job with this too. So I would not put this condition.
Okay. How does everyone else feel?
Not so strongly about. I would like to see a further exploration of just the fence plus the trees, just for the safety for the kids and the animals. Like, and I don't know if that's a condition, and this can still move forward with that condition, with the discussion, or I would be comfortable with that as long as the conversations were opened up and being had with folks. I'd just like to see something less permeable in place for folks.
If I may add?
Yeah.
There is no fence in proposed on the left or the right side of the property. And there is no fence on the left or right side of the abattoir, the gaslight. So the fencing that we're talking about will just be left to right across the back of the applicant's property. So there is opportunity to go around that to get to Route 106. We're trying not to fence in the property.
Yeah, I understand that.
Just so we're clear.
Yeah, and just, and just so I'm clear too, for me, it's not really a fence issue. I'm not really a huge fan of fences either. I think it's more of because there's a retaining wall here, and that drop is there, that I have that safety concern. If it wasn't for that drop with the retaining wall, then I don't think a fence would be needed. I think the trees would be fine. But it's just that, that concern I have. I don't, I don't feel strongly enough about it to be that I think we need to make it a condition if the board feels comfortable with that. But, you know, I just wanted to raise that as consideration and something to think about more.
All right. Well, we've given you guys a lot of feedback. This, the public hearing is still open. It's up to you guys. If you want us to close the public hearing, we can do that, and we can vote, or it's up to you guys.
I would say so.
You want us to close?
I'd like to close.
Okay. I will take a motion.
Motion to.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Kettem.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Zigmond.
Aye.
And Stetson is an aye. So we've had a lot of discussion here tonight about the buffer. I mean, I personally really like the idea of the green giants. I think it sounds like it's going to really kind of close it in from a, from both an aesthetic perspective, but also from a light perspective. I think it's going to be nice. I like the idea of having that kind of vegetation too, from a sound perspective. I know the building's large, and that's going to be a good buffer for the, for the gaslight folks as well. I'm hearing you guys on the fence, but it's kind of, it's kind of tight back there. I don't know.
I raise a concern. I'm cool. I'm fine with it.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, similar here.
Okay. I'll accept a motion.
What is our motion?
I think we had a couple of conditions.
Yeah, if you guys, if you guys want to propose some conditions, sure.
Did Joanne just make the motion?
I, I did not. But I thought we had previously talked about a few that I can't remember.
Well, we certainly, we certainly talked about having the, the parking condition.
Yep.
And I think the, you know, the applicants seem very open to that.
The dogs, if they're, if they have pets, allow pets, they need to have a designated potty-ing area.
And I think we wanted them to submit a spec sheet on the, on the plants.
On the plants, yes.
So I think we talked about three, those three conditions. I mean, I think those certainly make sense from my perspective.
So I'd like to make a motion with those conditions to move forward with 523 Foundry Street.
Kettem, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Kettem.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Zigmond.
Aye.
And Stetsons an aye as well. Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck.
Thank you for your time.
We're excited.
Just to work.
Where the kids and the pets go now?
Now, I think, okay, is that on the internally illuminated?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we're taking these a little bit out of order, but we are going to move now to the eternally, internally illuminated sign. Hopefully not eternally, but 560 Foundry Street.
This is the second time you've said it, though.
I'd like to see the zoning bylaws on that.
I don't think we'd let it go. Do we have someone here to present?
Yes, I'm here. Sorry.
Oh, wonderful. If you could just please state your name and address and tell us what you'd like.
Sure. My name is Nicole Handricken, and I'm from Sign Design at 170 Liberty Street in Brockton. And I'm here to discuss the internally lit Sawmill Village sign at 560 Foundry Street.
All right. And could you just kind of, for those of us, you know, as a refresher, could you just tell us a little bit about the sign?
Sure. It's channel letters halo-lit up against the wall. They say, just says the word Sawmill. The letters themselves are about 14 inches high. And from one end to the other, they're about 97 inches long, eight feet, one inch, or, yeah. I know you guys like to check out the lighting. I'm hoping that you guys will like the fact that these are halo-lit, which the backlighting. So it just kind of illuminates the letters. I find it to be not obnoxious with some of the other lighting.
Oh, there we go.
Is that me finally? Yep, sorry.
Great. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Uh, no.
No.
Board members?
Very classic-looking.
Yeah. It's got kind of a, kind of like a foundry kind of style. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I think it looks good. Joanne, anything?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right. I will hear a motion.
Motion to.
Just a question about, I'm in favor. This thing looks great. I looked at it earlier. But just a question about our other developments, for example, the Old Forge across the street from where I live, are they also able to do internally illuminated, or is this because it's on Route 106? So in other words, it's just concern. I don't know what the laws or the bylaw and the precedent is, but I think this looks beautiful, makes sense on 106, but I would suggest it probably doesn't make sense to have internally illuminated signs for other subdivisions elsewhere in town. And that's, just wanted to bring that question or concern to the board's attention. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, thank you, Dale, for bringing that up, because there's something that's been bothering me about the sign, and I didn't have a chance to talk to Rick Lincoln. Suzanne, in the bylaw, generally, for a commercial building, a wall sign is allowed. This is not a commercial building. This is the community house for residential development. And I think before the board votes, I didn't really have a chance to, again, there was something about it that was kind of bothering me, and now I know what it is. We can go back and look at the bylaw to see if such signage is allowed for residential development. They already, they have a sign.
Because usually, you're allowed at one, and then for more than one, they've got to come back to us usually, right?
I think it's, usually we get the signs for commercial development, illuminated signs for commercial development.
Right.
We haven't seen this. And they do have, they do have a subdivision sign. They've already installed it out there, a standing sign, like you would see. I'm sure that Mr. Humphrey's probably going to have some kind of sign. Sometimes it's granite or a rock. Sometimes it is a standing post sign. And they do have one of those that they've already installed, because it's not illuminated. They don't need to come before the board. But I would like to have us go back and take a look at the bylaw and see if this is allowed for residential.
Okay. Let's, let's hold off for tonight, then. Well, I think, if we don't know if it complies with the bylaw, we ought to just kick it to the next one.
Continue.
Yeah, that's right.
They need to bring it to the.
So, so Nicole, I don't necessarily know that this requires anything of you, but we're going to take a look at it, the bylaw, to see if this is something that is allowed. And if we don't think it is, then, you know, I assume Stephanie will get back to you on that between now and the next hearing.
And I'll get in touch with the applicant.
Yeah, that would need.
Okay.
The Board of Appeals.
I think it would. But again, I don't, I don't know if it's, I don't know.
Yeah.
We haven't had a situation like this.
Okay. All right. I will take a motion to continue.
A motion to continue? Wolf?
Do I have a second?
Second, Kettem.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Kettem.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Zigmond.
Aye.
And Stetson is an aye as well. All right. We've already done 523, and next up is the request for street acceptance, Lullaby Lane. This is Tanglewood Estates 2, the definitive subdivision plan. Stephanie, do you want to give an overview of this for the members?
Sure. This was a subdivision that was approved in 2002, Tanglewood 2. And Lullaby Lane is the last road that was developed along with the housing. The board, actually, some of the board members, I think maybe Amos and Bob.
I was there, yeah.
Remember that they came back to the board seeking approval to add an island.
And the cul-de-sac.
And the cul-de-sac, and removing a portion of the sidewalk, which was approved by the board. They, the road is in good impair, in good repair. We had our consultant go, the engineer, go out and take a look at it. The town has taken a look at it, DPW, and it's recommended that the board vote to recommend that this be accepted at town meeting.
So basically, we, we vote to recommend here, this goes up at town meeting, the town has to vote to approve it, it becomes a public way?
Select board to put it on the warrant.
On the warrant. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And so there's enough time to do that tonight, get it in front of the select board. Okay. Anyone have any questions? Joanne, I don't see you anymore, but I assume you're there.
Oh, she must have, somehow we lost her. I don't think I.
Oh. Okay.
I can close.
It was you.
Well, you know what? I'll unfold and see if that helps. There she is.
Help, there she is.
I'm good. Yes. Somehow I got kicked off as a panelist and was an attendee for a little bit.
Joanne, did you hear Stephanie's presentation?
I did, yeah. And I don't have any questions on this.
Okay. Well, then I will accept a motion.
Motion for street acceptance of Lullaby Lane?
Kettem, second.
Wolf, sorry.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Kettem.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Zigmond.
Aye.
And Stetsons an aye as well. Next up is the meeting minutes. I took a look through them. I thought they looked fine. Anyone else?
They're fine.
I will hear a motion.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Zigmond, second.
Okay.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Kettem.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Zigmond.
Aye.
And Stetson is an aye. So the last thing that we wanted to talk about, I guess this is maybe a chair report slash planning director update, is the plan for kind of supporting the MBTA communities voting that we did tonight, you know, up to sort of a, almost like a get out the vote concept. We've talked a little bit about, you know, having open houses and just other events to really bring people into the fold, make sure that they know everything they need to know about it. I think, you know, and I, I'll let Stephanie speak on the specifics, but I think the goal would be to have participation from everyone to the extent you're able, so that we can kind of get people educated. So, you know, everyone kind of knows the lay of the land going into the, into the town meeting.
Yeah. So I meant, I mentioned it a little bit when I let Dale know that, and the folks from Furnace Village, that we want to do this. Again, it's, one, we want to keep it front of mind, two, folks who will support it, to make sure they show up at town meeting, but also to make sure that other people are informed as to what the zoning really is and what it's about, and the efforts that the board has gone through to hear from the public and make modifications to the district in response to that. What we're thinking, I sat down with Wayne today, and we went through the calendar, and we looked at dates, and I'll get these out to people, just ideas for dates, and then provide feedback, and we can adjust that. We haven't cast this in stone. But starting the first week in April, doing an open house every other week for a series of four. And we talked about different locations where we'd like to try to do them, so that it's not just all, we can certainly do one here. We could do one in Quisett House. We'd like to see if we couldn't do something in other parts of the town. I was going to go give Bill a call. I mean, this is just a thought, maybe a Roma Joe's. They have enough room there that we could set up a couple hours and, you know, we'd buy coffee from them for people, maybe something like that. And the idea would be to have poster boards up that people could view. It would show the districts that are being proposed. We'd have copies of the text of the zoning available for people. We produced business cards for the Furnace Village neighborhood meeting that we had earlier, and we can print up more of those. They have a link to the website, so that people can further review what's required and on their own time. And the thought is that people would be there. I certainly would be there, Wayne, and member of. And the thought is that people would be there, I certainly would be there, Wayne and members of the board could be there and it's, and Donnie has offered, you know, maybe select board members. And again, it's really just to be there, welcome someone, help them understand, explain what the zoning is and answer questions they have. If you can't answer a question, you know, refer them either back to the website or to someone else who's either there that night or my office. So that's what we're thinking. We have contracted with the Barrett Group, they helped us with the first outreach session we had in October and they did a little bit of work for us for the Furnace Village. So Wayne and I are trying to get another meeting with them to just talk about any other ideas or thoughts they have and how we can promote that. So that's what we're thinking right now.
I have a quick question, are there any large public events that you can kind of tack on to? Like the Boy Scout Pancake Dinner, which I don't think happens this time of year, but I'm just thinking at my, at my place of work, we had a mini golf event that had 1,700 people come through in like six hours. And so there were actually people outside taking ballot initiatives because it was just a great place to post up because you have people churning through. So are there any events that are happening between now and that date where we could just get a small, like put up a poster board as people walk by? I know that the select board and DPW and other folks did that at the Harvest Festival at the NRT in the fall, that was very, that was very successful. So are there, I think there's, there's a spring one too, isn't there?
I think there is, yes.
Yeah, there's a spring.
Is that also at Sheep's Pasture?
Yeah, it's a craft one, I think, instead of the harvest. It's something like that.
Yeah.
But things like that, are there places where someone will just let us, like literally just put up a poster board and then somebody can stand by and answer any questions as people walk through? You're going to capture people you will not capture anywhere else.
That, I like that idea. I'm open to hearing from, I mean, there's a race coming up, right? Isn't there a road race in April? I've seen some.
Yeah, but.
Notification, but something like that.
Places, stuff like that where it's just.
I mean, if we can do that, I think that's a terrific idea.
Yeah, the Farm Festivals.
Well, another.
May 4th. Farm Festival at NRT. At NRT. Do you want me to reach out to Jen? Oh, please, yeah. I used to be on the board. Yeah. At Sheep's Pasture.
You have another idea.
Jen Cummings. Cummings, yes. Yeah. I know Jen.
What venues you, you are thinking about and what civic organizations in town? For example, I'm in the Eastern Lions and that's a place to go because you have 100 people there sitting.
I, I suggested that to Dale a while ago, I haven't brought it up since as we've been trying to work through.
I can, I can bring that to Ralph, to the president.
Yeah.
It's not a problem. But venues can be BFW, okay, the Knights of Columbus.
Yeah.
Even, even the golf course.
And also any retail spaces too, like I've worked on projects sometimes where there's been tabling out like Shaw's or Roach Brothers or any place where there's a lot of traffic.
Yeah. Would we be able to do Roach Brothers because it's a conflict of kind of interest there or would we have to pay attention to that?
I have no idea.
Okay, then neither do I.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's a great idea.
And again, we only have so much bandwidth.
Oh, totally, yeah.
So I, I think where we can get the biggest bang for our buck and the most people, which is what it sounds like you're all jumping on makes sense.
Yeah, I think these are great ideas.
If the Aims Free Library, if they're running any of their events, that kind of gets, gets a churn of folks through.
I think the Chamber of Commerce is very small, but they are very influential.
So maybe if we all just take a look at the calendar and we just focus on one or two, again, to preserve everyone's bandwidth.
Our link.
And then we figure out who's around and engaged.
Yeah, I had, I have talked with Isabel Wilson.
So how many, how many events, have you been able to map it out, like in terms of how many we can fit in following your schedule?
Well, I mean, I was thinking just the four.
Four.
But I mean, this might even be more effective.
I'm just thinking, open house, you have to get people to come versus this, it's grabbing people as they walk by.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
That's the big challenge. That's why I like your, the idea of go where they're, where they're at.
Well, I mean, you can also do a mix, you know, you can have a couple where it's open house that people are really interested in, you do a couple of those and then a couple where you're, you know, maybe people aren't expecting to see you there, but they just come up and so maybe, maybe we do a mix.
So maybe over the next couple of days, if you could just throw more ideas, we'll explore that as well, look and see.
Yeah.
What's on the calendar out there and then we'll come up with some ideas and put it out for the board. What are you laughing at?
Oh, because she's looking at the calendar, I just saw the eclipse glasses thing pass by, I said, come by, listen to us talk and get a free pair of eclipse glasses, you're going to get a lot of people. The demand for eclipse glasses is incredible already.
I've already, I've already, I have a set of, my, my son invited us to go with his family and I immediately ordered, and I'm like, oh, I'll get the binocular ones because those seem so cool. And then I started panicking, well, maybe the girls are too young and they, they won't, you know, and I, so we'll, so we have both, we have the glasses and we have the. You have it all.
All right, so between, yeah, so over the next couple of days, we'll look at some gadgets and gizmos maybe to present to people. But these are terrific ideas, so I guess we can all exchange some emails and, and then we can.
Yeah, so this is informational to set up a meeting, it is not about deliberation.
That's it. No deliberation. No deliberation. Okay. Well, that is, I think that's it for updates. I want to thank you guys really for all the hard work and, you know, and Peter and Greg,